To the Mayor and Members of Council, you are now able to start.
Good morning. This is Tracy Melnick, Counselor for Division Six. I will now call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. for April 20th, 2021. Welcome. This meeting is now in session. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Parkland County is continuing our practices of holding virtual meetings and will conduct this meeting using electronic communication under the provisions of Parkland County's Meeting Procedure Bylaw 2015-06 and Section 199 of the Municipal Government Act. We will start with today's Committee of the Whole meeting. At this point, I will proceed with calling today's roll call. I'll ask each member of council to come by division to confirm your attendance by saying present and ask that each member of council state your name and division for the record. We will begin with Division One.
Counselor Emily Johnson, Division One, present.
Thank you. Division Two?
No Division Two present.
Not Division Two. What am I talking about? Division Three.
Counselor Phyllis Kabasiak, Division Three, present.
Division Four?
Counselor Daryl Hollins, Division Four, present.
Division Five?
Counselor John McCab, Division Five, present.
Mayor?
Mayor Roger Shagis, present.
Thank you. So we have a full complement of council today. The following procedure measures will be followed to ensure transparency and fairness. Each time a committee member speaks, they will state their name, followed by their division. The Chair will read out each agenda item and ask the Chief Administrative Officer to introduce the matter. Each committee member will be asked if they would like to provide comments on the agenda items and will indicate when they are finished speaking. Once the committee member has spoken, the Chair will ask if there's any further comment. Should a committee member have further comments, then each member will again be given an opportunity to provide additional comments. This process will be repeated until there is no further comments, discussions, or debate. After each motion, all of the committee in order of division will state their names and division and vote either for or against. The Chair will declare the motion carried or failed. On today's agenda, there is today's agenda, there are the following items. Item 4.1, the adoption of April 6, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item 5.1, Public Input Session at 9:15. Item 5.2, we have a 9:30 appointment with the Edmonton International Airport, which is their annual update. Item B.1, which is the Unite Project Update. Item D.1 is the Community League Update. Item 8.1, Rural Municipalities of Alberta Contact Newsletter. And item 8.2, Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
Our Chair may have frozen. Ms. Williams, maybe we will just give our Chair.
Division One? Or am I unfrozen again?
You're unfrozen. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry if you can repeat that. Okay. That was nothing? It was that for consent. Sorry. You have to repeat it. You were frozen that whole time. So we are going to items to add or delete from today's agenda. Do you have anything, Division One? No, nothing. Thank you. Nothing? Division Three, any additions or deletions?
Nothing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Division Four, any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. Thank you.
Division Five, additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions from me, Madam Chair.
Mayor Shagis, additions or deletions?
Nothing, Madam Chair. Thanks.
And I have nothing. At this point, we will ask Administration if they have any additions or deletions to today's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No additions or deletions from Administration today.
Okay. I'm just going to put in here at this moment, if at any point I freeze and we need to connect on if Counselor Kabasiak will be your assumed Chair. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Madam Chair, it's Mayor Shagis. I will move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Looking to committee, all those in favor? Please raise your hand. Thank you. That is carried. And items on today's consent agenda are consent agenda are item 4.1, the adoption of the April 6, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item 8.1, so the item 4.1, the committee meeting, the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. 8.1, Rural Municipalities of Alberta Contact Newsletter. And 8.2, Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Are there any additions or deletions to this consent agenda? Just looking in general? Nothing? Okay. Don't see any hands put up. May I now have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented, please?
Madam Chair, Counselor Emily Johnson, Division One, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. If I could see by a show of hands, all those in favor? And that is carried. So now we will begin with the first item on the agenda, which is we will go to the excuse me, we'll go to the Project Unite Update, B1, CIO Swain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Fitch, Director of Strategic Initiatives, and Robert Brassard, IT Project Management Contractor, have joined us to present the Project Unite Update and answer any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swain. So today we'll do a Unite Up project update for the Committee of the Whole. I think we're frozen. Are we good now?
Mark, we still can't see your presentation.
Okay, I'm just trying to pull it up.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. Thank you. So today we'll be updating the Project Unite. Basically, we're going to do a recap of the Unite program. And then we're going to do an update of the 2021 projects, which includes Planning and Development Modernization, Office 365 rollout, Bellamy Retirement, and then some conclusions. Next slide, please. As you remember, this is our Unite roadmap, which will actually be updating later this month to move some of the projects that have been completed. As you can see on the left-hand side, that there's four of these projects are now complete. And then we're moving on to the other projects within this list. And from there, we'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brassard and we'll move into some more details on the specific projects.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Fitch. We've had this, this first project we're going to be talking about from the last chart is the Planning and Development Modernization. So we've had this actually on the plan officially for the last three years and we're just getting to that. After we finished major projects from last year, such as the payroll modernization, which has gone very well in production. And now we're moving our minds eye to the, the projects in 2021 here. So I'll start by saying the project timelines on this one, or January 2021 to May 2022. The goal is to streamline the processes around planning and development. As you may recall, there's more than 3,000 applications and permits that are processed annually. Most are done through mandated regulation or guided by legislation. The current work processes for these applications and permits, as you may remember from previous presentations, is largely done through email and sharing files or putting files on the shared drives and in, in a way not, not managed in a formal sort of type of records. So as part of this project, the transactions that we're talking about here, again, the permits and applications. And in order to provide a more predictable and consistent service around these functions, we're going to be adopting an end-to-end delivery approach that simplifies customer interactions and optimizes operations between the various departments, very similar to what we did with the CRM application that we implemented a year or so ago. So where we started in January, we went through a competitive RFP, which stands for Request for Proposals. That's a formal competitive process. We had several proposals by different vendors. In this particular case, we ended up, when they say finalizing contract, at this point now, we have a contract in hand with the vendor. The vendor is CityView. And right now, they actually, just to give you a bit of context around CityView, the vendor, they have 10 implementations in British Columbia, 35 in Ontario, Northwest Territories in Saskatchewan. More locally, this vendor has implementations of their software in City of Edgery, City of Laduke, Rocky View County, and Town of Canmore, which are closer to home. So the modules that we purchased are inspections and permits, variety of property information, planning. And then there's a mobile set of apps to help clients and residents being able to view their, their permit to from mobile devices and then a portal as well that'll be stood up. And the timeline for this again is between essentially now and looking to have that system operational in May 2020. 2022, rather. So just very briefly, I got a couple of slides on. So what do you get here? And in this case, I'm just trying to show that everything's in an actual system. Right now, it's in emails and again, kind of based on memory and spreadsheets. And right now, what we're going to be doing is moving all of that into a set of screens and systems where you can take a look at the permit, when it's, the date is required, whether it's complete, whether it's behind on the targeted approval or next steps on that. So this will be adopting a formal system, a normal system, if you will, and moving out of a very manual process. And just to add a little more detail here, I mentioned that there's going to be certainly more information in the hands of residents. In this case, the slide showing we've got a portal where you'll be able to take a look at your submissions. You also have phones where you'll be able to take pictures and send them and upload them from an inspection perspective and so forth. Not only is this good for digitizing that process, but there'll be less, from a COVID perspective, less need to come into, you know, into the Parkland County Administration building directly. So certainly helping remote workers and remote processes will be enabled through this. This slide here, again, and just to show you a bit of a flavor of what's coming down the pipeline. In this case, management can have dashboards and be able to track which permits, again, are on track, which ones are behind schedule from a list of things to do. And they can track which planners are reviewing which permits and so forth and so on. And so, you know, there's just a lot more transparency and rigor around being able to do the intake, management, administration, and closure of these different types of approvals and permits. So that's something that the planning department is very much looking forward to. They don't have any of this today, obviously, because it's just some spreadsheets and things in the, what we call G drive. So that was the update in planning development. We're looking forward to getting that going. The other major project that's underway here is the Office 365 in the cloud. The background and scope, modernizing business productivity tools for Parkland County staff by leveraging existing Office 365 resources. So right now you have a enterprise license for, from Microsoft. And with that, there's a whole bunch of features that you get that you've already bought and paid for. And now at this point in time, we're starting to stand up those additional features. So in the last, roughly around a month ago, email was moved to the cloud from on-premise. And now what we're going to be doing here is moving a number of the files that people work with into the cloud, which means that they're going to be able to access those files easier and better going forward. Now, we also talk about introducing improved remote access for staff. Again, you'll be able to get to your files from any browser. And there was also an initiative through, I believe it was a most grant, that Mr. Fitch spearheaded with the finance. So as part of this, we're going to be rolling out somewhere in the order of 200 to 210 laptop computers to staff, which will help facilitate them working remotely better. And so we're providing them the, the infrastructure, i.e. the computers, and then the tools to work remotely in a more efficient capacity. This project is looking to complete by the end of Q2. And so, well underway, we've actually moved, we're moving the 22 different departments or areas. And we've moved around four of them. We're moving another few more this week in waves. And it's going, it's going quite well. Next, we have a few other related to the Bellamy system. You may remember that this was used for payroll. So payroll was moved off of that system. And there's a few other different business functions that are still on that system. The idea here is between now and the end of the year is to retire the AS400 system with more modern processes and online capabilities. So we're looking to have that completed by the end of the year. Those remaining business areas include the utility billing system, that's roughly 1,500 accounts. And we're looking at having that as a cloud-hosted system where people can pay their bills and, and do more online. The same with the cashiering function. That's essentially what people are coming in and doing, paying their taxes, paying for the permits and so forth. We want to be able to stand up an online function for that and move that out of the AS400 system. And lastly, the tax and assessment system. We have a very similar process around our methodology around acquiring software and implementing it. We always start with the competitive process. And so in the case of the utility billing system, we went through a competitive process and now we're reviewing the proposals. And we're evaluating those and we're looking at to see which system will work best for the county. So with each one of these areas, we work with the business that's leading that area. So in this case, the utility billing system, we're working with the utilities area. Cash sharing is a finance function and taxes assessment is in tax and assessment area. The tax and assessment, we're looking to create an RFP and then go through that competitive bidding process. And that's, we're looking to get that last piece underway and have an RFP out by the end of the month. But these are in different phases of the initiation process. And in conclusion, so the projects are being initiated according to plan and approved budgets. We're seeing positive results in the Office 365 rollout and governance remains high. We meet with the Unite Steering Committee every two weeks and Mark and myself provide updates to them on budget, schedule, and scope and challenges. As you may recall, the, the Executive Steering Committee for the Unite is the CIO and the General Managers. So there's a high involvement by management and high transparency. And we've been doing that for the past three years, meeting every two weeks. And we're continuing to undertake that approach going forward. At this time, that concludes the, the presentation and I'll turn it back over to you, Mark.
Actually, if we can just finish this up right now, Mark, if we can just finish up for a little bit. I'm going to just pause for a minute and head over to Public Input and then we'll come. I'm going to just pause for a minute and head over to public input and then we'll come back to yourself for your concluding comments if we can, Mark.
Sure.
So it is actually now nine twenty-one, so we will, if, we will head into public input. And we'll pause at the moment while administration gets the member who have pre-registered to speak in the public input and the clerk will confirm that those registered have joined the meeting, which Ms. Williams has confirmed that Shelley Gordon has, is registered and is in the meeting room. So at this point, I'd just like to welcome everybody to public input. This is an opportunity where Committee of the Whole welcomes the public comments, which are very important to us. We will not be entering into dialogue at this time. The purpose of a public input is for you, the public, to inform Committee of the Whole of matters that you wish to be brought to our attention. If you have specific questions, staff will obtain your contact information. And again, as I indicated, we have only one registered at this point, which is Ms. Shelley Gordon. So I will now ask Ms. Shelley Gordon if she would like to begin to speak. And then after that's finished, we will confirm for sure, once again, with administration, that there is no other people wishing to speak that have been registered. So Ms. Gordon, again, I apologize for a little lateness in this, we were just finishing up with the presentation, if you would like to begin.
Thank you very much. I am Shelley Gordon. I've been attending your public input for the past couple of meetings, so I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. And thank you for the presentation last week by Ms. Domagen on the Carmelite development and the approval process and our opportunities to seek further clarification and understanding. I'm back today because I still have some questions, I guess, some confusion around some of the events, so I was just wondering if I could seek some further clarification. There was talk in the presentation, there was figures presented by Ms. Domagen on the capacity and the occupancy of the Carmelite expansion. And I'm just wondering where the numbers came from. I've seen a few presentations now that have been provided. And it seems like there was a few areas maybe not accounted for in the new build. So there's dining facilities, looks like a second kitchen that might be for dining services. There's a store, there's at least five offices, the two meeting rooms and a library. In the Carmelite presentation, they also indicated an overflow area of a hundred and eighty-five. And so this would put the occupancy closer probably to nine hundred. This, I'm not also sure from the plans if the old chapel is going to be utilized or if it, there's plans for it to be demolished. There's actually two other chapels there, but it looks like in the plans, one is staying. So that potentially could increase the capacity by another two hundred and sixty-five guests. So I'm just wondering where the numbers are coming from and why they differ. At the time of the development approval process, the question was raised a number of times, and I guess I'll raise it again now, is what was the plan in place for a water source? At the July second, twenty nineteen presentation of the Carmelites, the question was asked there as well, and I haven't been able to find really, I guess, a clear answer about that. I'm wondering what the old washrooms were compared to the new washroom, so the need for water. The new site has sixty washrooms, I don't know what the old site has, the laundry room, I'm not sure how that capacity compares with the old site. And there's an irrigation system with the new site, and I'm not sure if there was irrigation needs with the old site. So the capacity for water, the need for water is significantly greater, I think. So I'm just wondering what the county takes into account for water sources when looking at significant developments in rural unserviced areas. And if there isn't anything that is reviewed as part of the development approval process, I'm wondering if that would be something that would be looked at as being amended in the bylaws with your review. And then maybe with these, it's quite a large project and it's almost, you know, on a commercial scale, really. And why you wouldn't be looking at piped and metered water to be able to assess the, the volume being used, especially when applying for a license. I don't know how you would monitor that. I also had a question regarding the biophysical assessment. In the presentation, Ms. Domager indicated that a biophysical assessment, a tabletop was completed as part of the April twentieth, twenty eighteen permit for tree clearing, which was prior to the development approval process, which didn't occur until July fourth of twenty eighteen. So I'm wondering if that assessment was based on the land stripping and the impacts of the tree stripping? Or were you provided the architectural drawings of the proposed development prior to the development application? And use that to determine that there would be no significant environmental impact at that point in time? I'm not sure, I'm not a law person, but there is, in the Land Use Bylaw, sixteen point three point two, section H, which indicates an environmental impact study would be required if there was a significant development in or near an ESA. I'm also wondering about a traffic impact assessment, I couldn't find anywhere that one has been completed. It's also indicated in your Land Use Bylaw sixteen point two point three, section E. And if it wasn't completed, will it be completed? And how will those results be shared? John Clark also indicated that there may be benefit in doing a traffic management plan because of the traffic in the area, and I'm wondering if that was just a suggestion or if that's actually going to be fulfilled. I've been down there recently and the traffic is quite significant and the road damage is severe at this point in time, I know it's spring, but the road is really bad right now. So if there's any indication of what and when that will be done. And then in the
Ms. Gordon, we're getting
Yeah.
Okay. Getting pretty close to the time limit here, so if I wrap up on that, it'd be appreciated, thank you.
Yeah, I think I just have one more question. Regarding the July twenty nineteen presentation to council, John Clark was presenting with a couple of the Carmelite residents. And he indicated that that time that there would be underground holding tanks, that all of the firefighting needs would be taken care of by the underground tanks that were being installed and the water capacity was everything that they needed, they wouldn't be extracting from the external pond, I think that's those two small lakes that he was referencing, that they wouldn't need to be touched. So I'm just wondering what happened to the water tanks? And the option of tanking or having water trucked in? There was also talk of a dry pond that the water runoff from the hill would be diverted into instead of across the road. And from what I'm understanding with the application for water licenses, that that pond would now be filled with water for fire suppression. So I'm just confused as to what happened to the tanks and the dry pond? And now the need for the sixty-five million gallons of water?
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Gordon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So we do have administration online, I'm sure that they do have your contact information as well. So I'm sure somebody will be getting back to you. At this point, I'll look to Ms. Williams. My understanding, there is no other members, if you could confirm that, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the members of committee, no, there are no further submissions or people in attendance for the public input.
Thank you very, very much. And again, thanks, Ms. Gordon, for your input at public input time.
Thank you.
So at this point, we are, we are just heading one minute in ahead of schedule to the public input, which is the appointment of the Edmonton International Airport. I will, though, go to Ms. Swain, and if you would like to do the introduction, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So please welcome Tom Ruth, Joan Hertz and Doug Horner to our meeting. They are here to provide their annual update on the Edmonton International Airport, thank you.
Good morning to you all, and if you would like to begin, I, like I say, we're, we're right on time now. So Doug, if you wanted to go and gather, you're just taking the lead.
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's great to see everyone, at least virtually, I would love to be able to get together and, and chat in person, but obviously we're all in, on a COVID situation for God knows how long, but hopefully by summer, we'll be able to grab a beer around something of a barbecue. I'm really glad to be here today and very honored to be your appointee on the Edmonton International Airport. As you can appreciate, it's been a rather tough time for the airport over the last little while, I'm very proud of how they've managed this thing. And it's my pleasure to introduce you to our new board chair, Joan Hertz, whom I'm sure many of you know from other roles she's played, and also our CEO, Tom Ruth. And I'll let Joan, you take it from here, thanks very much, folks.
Great, thanks so much, Doug. So I'm Joan Hertz, and as he said, just since January of this year, I took over as board chair from Nassim Bashir, who you've met before, as his term ended and we missed him. I've been, I've been on the board for about five years and served as chair of our audit committee and of our governance and human resources committees before stepping up to be chair. And in addition to chairing EIA, I think I've met some of you. As Doug said, I'm also chair of the ATB Financial Board and I'm vice chair of Covenant Health and on some other private company boards, so I'm really pleased to be here with you today. And as part of our commitment to you as our pointers, we like to provide an update on our past year of operations, a little bit of looking ahead and hopefully have time for questions that you might have at the end. So I'll talk a little bit more from an overall situation point of view, and then Tom will delve into some of the specifics and talk about some things relative to, to your county. So let me start off with the obvious, as Doug said, twenty twenty was a really challenging year and it won't surprise you that that was hard for everyone, but I just want to share a little bit how severely aviation has been impacted by the pandemic. At the airport, our passenger traffic plummeted sixty-eight percent last year. And to two point six million passengers is all we served. And honestly, one point two million of them were in the first two months of the year before the pandemic really hit. So we only served one point four million after that. And the numbers look almost worse for the first two months of January, February, we're down eighty-three percent. So this has had a dramatic impact on our budget and operations. But as Doug said, I'm also proud of how the airport responded because as they sort of realized the scope of these impacts, executive leadership responded really quickly, aggressively cutting costs across the organization by significantly reducing the footprint of the terminal by about a third, cutting capital spending by seventy-five percent. So that means we're really just spending on capital that's essential maintenance for safety. And then this past summer, after we sort of exhausted every other possibility, we were forced to reduce our workforce by over thirty percent, eliminating close to a hundred positions. And that's only a small part, really, of the tens of thousands of employees that have been laid off either temporarily or permanently by airlines, airports and other related businesses across the country in the past year. But our top priority has always been the health, safety and security of staff and passengers. So as public health advice evolved, we quickly implemented all the government recommended health and safety protocols so that we could enable essential travel as much as possible. But we have seen a reduction of many flights, some canceled by the airlines, some paused because of the Government of Canada restrictions. As you probably all personally know, our flights to the United States and sun destinations were paused by the government. So we, Edmonton Airport is Canada's fifth busiest airport, but we're not one of the four airports that are currently allowed to receive international flights. Those flights are restricted only to the airports of Toronto, Montreal, Calgary and Vancouver. And so obviously during these times, air cargo is even more important than ever, moving vital goods in and out of our region and Northern Alberta and Canada's far north. And some good news is that in twenty twenty, our air cargo volumes actually climbed by seven point five percent compared to twenty nineteen, and Tom will delve into a little bit more detail. But looking to the future a bit, while we're now operating with a more streamlined structure, as I mentioned, we're focused on recovery. We're focused on building back our critical air service and spurring our role as a catalyst for regional innovation and regional economic recovery. So our twenty twenty twenty-four strategic plan is aptly called Innovation Expansion. And we're really dedicated to that journey that we started before COVID nineteen hit us. And that includes being a strong focus on an airport of the future. So even in the depths of the pandemic, we kept working to spur innovation and support, support sustainability. So you would see that in some of the new technology and new partnerships that Tom's going to mention shortly. But from a board perspective, I'd say that that journey, of course, is going to have to move a little slower now. Will, it'll be requiring us to make some hard decisions about what we can prioritize, but we still believe that this is how we can best serve our communities and passengers. So as you know, after health and safety, our primary focus is economic development, creating jobs, attracting investment and supporting our economic recovery as a province. And everything we do is for the communities that we serve. So both international and Villanuev airports are pivotal to the region and Airport City is a major employment hub. We have lots of runway ahead of us still with room to grow there. So as we move forward into twenty twenty-one and beyond, I have no doubt that we're still going to be tested further by this pandemic and the economic and social fallout, but I just want to reassure you that I believe our airports will persevere and we're ready to confidently take on the challenges of recovery and keep moving people and goods in and out of our region. So I'll look forward to your questions and I'll turn it over to Tom now, so he can expand on some of this, thanks.
Thank you, Joan, can everybody see me okay? Thanks. Wanted to start off by saying, Mayor Rod, it's really good to see you as, as you continue to recover. It's just great to see you virtually, so online, just wanted to, to start there. And also to, to say hello to everybody that's joined us here today. I'd like to officially welcome Joan to our board and also note what a fantastic board member Doug has been with his experience on our board, especially during these trying times, so. And then back to Joan, she's been a strong member of our Board of Directors for several years. She's a community leader and builder, and I know she's exactly the right person to lead our board through these times. And Joan has given you the high-level figures, but let me start by saying our leadership team is focused on the future. Twenty twenty is a year that many people would like to forget. It's been crippling to aviation around the world. However, I'm very optimistic about the future. I have frequently told our staff, we're in a valley right now. Yes, it's a low valley, but we're going to power up the engines and climb out of it. Our entire community will need to be ready. Early last spring, as the pandemic took hold, we knew aviation would be altered forever, much like after nine eleven. There will be fundamental changes to flying that are not going to go away. The health and safety of our passengers and staff is always our number one priority. Almost one year ago, we'd launched our EIA-ready program. All passenger areas and processes are part of the program. And extensive public communication and passenger education are key elements of our COVID nineteen response. We began an enhanced cleaning program that is still running and will continue long-term. We have also embraced new touchless technologies to reduce touch points and improve cleaning. Some examples of this include installing UVC light cleaning machines on our escalator handrails. We did that about a month and a half ago, we're the first company in Alberta to have that. Working with our friends at Vancouver International Airport, we purchased self-cleaning check-in kiosks for our US customs area when that comes back. And we also work with our partners, the Federal Security Agency's CATSA, to support temperature screening and mask requirements. This work was recognized last fall when EIA was accredited by Airports Council International under its rigorous airport health accreditation program. This certifies that EIA is meeting high standards on how to respond to COVID nineteen, as well as passenger safety concerns. We're also halfway through a pilot program in partnership with Alberta Health that is offering voluntary rapid COVID nineteen screening for frontline airport employees. This is an added layer of safety for passengers. When you come to the airport, you can know that all the employees you interact with, whether at the airline check-in counter, security or coffee shops, they've all had the opportunity to undergo COVID nineteen screening as part of the, working at the airport. This program is extended for passengers for an additional cost if they are traveling to a destination that requires proof of a negative test before traveling. We are looking at multiple options and partners to ensure we can continue to service, to, to continue to have services like this available to passengers and airport employees long-term. This includes working with an Edmonton-based company that has a rapid testing device currently going through a Health Canada regulatory review. We have worked closely with our retailers and restaurants and with Alberta Health Services to ensure all safety practices are closely to ensure all safety practices are closely followed. We feel these standards will become common passenger expectations into the future. And as Joan mentioned, we're focused on using innovation and technology to help solve some of these challenges and do them in a cost-effective way. Now to briefly highlight some significant positive news that occurred in 2020 regarding cargo. For several years, EIA has been focused on expanding its cargo operations, investing in new facilities, and growing our community with new partners, and the timing couldn't have been better. Twenty twenty was a dynamic year for cargo operations, driven mostly by medical PPE shipments, but also by the continued explosive growth of e-commerce and online shopping. So here's some figures for you. EIA and its cargo partners handled forty-six thousand metric tons of cargo, a seven point five percent increase from 2019, and a new all-time annual record. This is particularly impressive since over half our cargo is usually in the belly of passenger aircraft, and we saw significant cuts in passenger traffic last year. The number of cargo charter flights saw a tremendous two hundred and fourteen percent increase from 2019. At one point last summer, our cargo operations handled three AN-124 flights within a twenty-four hour period, a new record for us. For those who don't know, the Antonov 124 plane is the second largest plane flying today. On our busiest day, we had over eighteen independent cargo aircraft movements. Of course, it's not just EIA that benefits from this. A whole team of companies can be involved with each flight, creating jobs and economic opportunities for our entire cargo and logistics community. These air pipelines benefit not just our immediate market, but we know that imports coming through our airport and shipped across Central and Northern Alberta and across Canadians' northern territories also benefit. Many people don't realize that the Edmonton Metropolitan Region has a strategic advantage of being closer to Asia than many other major centers via our circumpolar routes. Combined with strong local cargo distribution options, it means we're a natural fit for continued cargo growth. In fact, we're preparing for the future growth right now. In late February, we were awarded an eighteen million dollar grant from the Government of Canada's National Trade Corridors Funding. And this was matched by EIA with eighteen million dollars of additional capital funding to help fund a thirty-six million dollar total expansion of our cargo operations. Specifically, the Cargo Expansion Project will include expansion of the primary cargo apron area by forty-seven thousand square meters, enough for two more wide-body cargo planes simultaneously, or five in total at the same time. That is equal to five and a half CFL football fields of expansion. A new connection from the runway to the apron will also be constructed, and a new hydrant system will tie the two two-million-liter shell aviation fuel tanks. This means faster and more efficient fueling and less trucks on the apron to increase safety. Plus, expansion of the cold storage cargo capacity by fourteen hundred square meters. This will increase EIA's cold storage area to nearly two thousand square meters in total. This expanded space helps provide agrofood exports agrofood exports access to both domestic and international markets. This expansion work will start this year and will take approximately two years to complete. We were proud this past year that EIA became the first airport in Canada to receive a global certification known as CEIV Pharma. This certification from the International Air Transport Association, or IATA, tells global companies our cargo community is trained and equipped to handle any temperature sensors of cargo. We meet the highest standards in the world for handling export and imports that need cold storage. This can include, yes, medical vaccines and sensitive pharmaceutical transports. However, while the certification doesn't specifically apply to agriculture, the high standards we now meet have natural benefits for storage and exports and imports of agricultural products. Supporting farmers and producers, including those right here in Parkland County, is important to us. We look forward to working with Parkland County Administration to determine if there might be an opportunity to grow new high-value crops that could continue to diversify the economy and offer new sustainable food production practices. These foods could then be exported nationally and internationally by leveraging your county and EIA's critical export and logistics skills. We are the only airport in Canada to have the CEIV Pharma designation and one of only three airports in North America. We plan to use this connection, these connections we made this year in the cargo community to keep growing our operations. This will create jobs and economic diversification for our whole greater region. I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes now on Villeneuve Airport located next door in Sturgeon County. The airport supports general aviation and flight training opportunities, but that doesn't tell the full story. It generates more than sixty million in economic impact annually and supports several hundred jobs. The pandemic has impacted our plans, but we still hope to increase flight training opportunities, including attracting potential students from overseas. We're also looking at ways to grow the presence of Alberta Aerospace and Technology Center of that center at Villeneuve Airport to capitalize on the flexibility of smaller centers. One example of this is the is the company Pegasus Imagery, which operates commercial-scale drone operations. They were originally operating at EIA, but moving to Villeneuve provided a strategic opportunity to further expand and grow the company. They could do different types of testing in controlled airspace, which is better suited at Villeneuve Airport. Earlier this year, we were really pleased to see Sturgeon County commit to extending a two million dollar regional water line to the airport to finally establish a safe and secure source of water on the property, which is so important for expansion. Currently, water is trucked into the airport, but once complete, this new water line will help facilitate the future growth and development of this important facility. We are working with the Villeneuve Landing Network to bring together commercial and government partners to help grow this facility. For those interested in the annual Edmonton Air Show held at Villeneuve, the show has had recent challenges, as you know. First, we had to cancel in 2019 because of the unavoidable weather issues that made it impossible to stage this aviation show safely. And then it canceled again in 2020 because of the pandemic. We look forward to future discussions with the show organizers to see if we're going to be able to move forward in the near future. Moving on now to a large topic that I know this council is passionate about, sustainability. I wanted to acknowledge the Edmonton Metro Region's past declaration of a climate emergency and the significant work and leadership you are showing. Your residents, our passengers, care about this, and we're taking significant action to be a sustainable organization, support the broader industry. Even in the depths of the pandemic, being dedicated to sustainability remains a core value and guides all our decisions and actions in everything we do. We are proud of what our team has achieved to tackle environmental challenges, but we can go much further. In a country as large as Canada, air travel is a necessity, not a luxury. This is especially true for the Edmonton Metro Region as a major northern gateway, isolated from other major centers in Canada. EIA is also a major connection point for northern communities to the rest of the world. Most of our emissions, about eighty percent, are related to electrical usage. Keeping the lights off is not an option, especially in the winter. But we are exploring how we can make our system as efficient as possible. I could tell you about how we've replaced over eighteen thousand LED lights and focused on efficiency, but the most visible and impactful way we're acting is with Airport City Solar. This is a six hundred and twenty-seven acre, one hundred and twenty megawatt solar farm with over three hundred and forty thousand solar panels that will dramatically transform the west side of EIA's lands. It will be the world's largest airport solar farm, creating new jobs and bringing a potential new power source for the airport operations and surrounding regions. It represents a hundred and sixty-nine million in foreign direct investment directly into the Edmonton Metro Region. It will create jobs, more renewable electricity for Alberta, and will be a major feature of Airport City, of the Airport City Sustainability Campus going forward. This is only the first part of our dedication to sustainability. However, at the airport, we maintain a mindset that it's not just about us. We are here to serve the region and help our communities. So I want to tell you, we are committed to working with you as elected officials and with your administration to support outreach and environmental, social, and governance issues. We know the corporate and public world is shifting, and ESG issues are becoming a major part of the region's narrative when trying to interact, when trying to attract investments. We want to work with you to tell this story, and we feel our developments can be a significant part of the narrative. We are already having these discussions at multiple levels with other governments and organizations, including with Edmonton Global. This ESG focus is real and must be taken seriously if the region will continue to be a destination for investment and activity. I'd now like to give you an update on Indigenous partnerships. Indigenous communities are an integral part of our region. We are working to meaningfully expand and deepen our relationships, especially with Métis General Settlement Council and Métis Nations of Alberta Groups, Confederacy of Treaty Six First Nations, Enoch Nations, Musqueachie's Nation, Inuit of the Western and Eastern Arctic. These relationships are built on understanding the interests and the needs of the groups, as well as emerging opportunities for reconciliation and collaboration. The key focus of our efforts was the recent formation of the Elder and Knowledge Keepers Circle to advise us on our work related to our new Indigenous interpretive and retail site within the terminal, being led by our concessions team. This circle first met on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and it was really inspirational to see how enthusiastic the Indigenous representatives in the group were to support EIA as we step forward and invite deeper connections with our Indigenous neighbors from across Western and Northern Canada. In addition, we are also advancing our work in the traditional land use reviews for Airport City. Earlier, I mentioned our cargo services and cold storage, and specifically the benefits for agricultural producers. I'd like to expand on that briefly. Agriculture is important to this county, and we know it's a pillar of Alberta's economy overall. Farming, livestock, and food processing contribute millions of dollars to our communities. We want to help grow that and be a key conduit to help producers access new global markets. We support the larger regional agricultural master plan. It's important to have a plan that will protect valuable agricultural lands and allow for planned and orderly development. Our agricultural richness is an advantage for our region. This includes hosting bee colonies and honey production the last few years at the airport, as well as hosting a small hemp crop grown last year on EIA lands. Hemp production is an area where we see a lot of future opportunities. Our staff is engaging with regional, national, international hemp companies in order to further expand our region's benefit and capabilities in this area. We welcome any opportunities to discuss agricultural opportunities with you. I'd like to close now with just a few other points. Looking ahead in 2021, as testing programs expand and vaccines roll out more in the coming months, we expect that there will be excitement and anticipation for many, many people wanting to travel again. There have been positive signs for the future. Last month, Flare Airlines, which is headquartered at EIA, announced a significant expansion for the summer schedule, including new destinations across Canada from EIA. We will continue to engage with airlines. It's too early to say right now what will be possible, knowing it will take time for airlines to recover themselves. We know it will take several years to rally back to pre-pandemic levels. Health and safety are always our top priority, and we're ready for the future of aviation in our market. Although the pandemic has tested our airport and our region in significant ways, we are thankful for our airline partners, our tenants, our customers, our community and municipal partners, and the entire region for their partnership and support. We know our region will rebound stronger than ever, and so will our airports. So thank you for this time for Joan and Doug and I to give you an update, and we'd like to open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Ruth, Ms. Hertz, and Doug. So at this point, I'll look to a member of council, and then they will put first the motion forward. Counselor Kadaski, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor Kadaski, Division Three, I'll put forward the motion to accept the EIA presentation as offered today. And I have a question. Thank you very much for the information, and I have participated in Edmonton Global discussion about regional, you know, port and plans for what's happening with the airport as it comes out of pandemic and toward recovery. So I've participated, and I've heard some of the issues there. Also participate in the landing network and the you're giving about cargo are quite impressive as passengers numbers fell, cargo numbers increased. And I know that was a focus for the Villeneuve Airport. Can you give me an idea of percentage of activity in terms of cargo that is happening at Villeneuve? Did it basically stay the same during the pandemic, or because of its focus wasn't able to pick up more, and that was a higher growth area?
Sure, and I should tell you, at EIA on cargo is we're still right around record numbers this year as well, which is really good to see. So at the macro level, cargo in our region is so important, and we're the reason we keep trying to get all these inbound import or flights into our region and are having some success in that is so that we can handle export projects from throughout our regions. Regarding Villeneuve Airport, it's it's not at the same scale clearly for, you know, the wide-body aircraft that that won't be able to fly out of there. So so on the cargo activity would not be would not be scalable there in terms of, you know, these these large aircraft that need ten thousand pounds per pallet or whatever, and a really long runway. But there certainly would be, you know, opportunities for for smaller shipments to to outline regions. And so we don't, we don't have a good way to to really collate information on how much ton of your cargo is going out of there. It's mostly really for, I'd say, a little more northern activity and regional activity. For the large, the largest by far segment of flights out of Villeneuve Airport is flight training. And so, you know, tens of thousands of flights for flight train out of there, and it's a huge opportunity for increased flight training out of that that area.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruth. Go to Mayor Shakers. Do you have a hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to extend my congratulations to Ms. Hertz as your appointment as Chair for EIA. And Tom, always good to see you and really appreciate the update. Under your leadership and the leadership of the board, you know, EIA, I'm sure will recover. It's it's going to take some time. But certainly, a lot of the focus of your presentation today truly demonstrates the innovation that's demonstrated by you and your leadership team, and it's much appreciated. You're a valued partner, not just for Parkland County, but for the EMRB and its membership. And you talked about the work you're doing with Edmonton Global. It's much appreciated. I do have one question for you. I know the federal government did provide some, a little bit of a reprieve, I guess, for Canadian airports with the lease rates. The last I saw, that was extended to December of this past year. Has that been extended further? If you can apprise council of that, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out by saying, Canada in general support for aviation airports has trailed the world, and it's a real concern. Airports in the US have received twenty-one billion dollars worth of direct cash infusion grants. And our airport our size, fifth-largest airport in Canada, would have already received about a half a billion dollars in grants. And, of course, that we, what we have received are two things, very helpful, but but I want to put it in perspective. It's very sobering in terms of our financial situation in aviation without having more federal government's support. So the two things that they've helped with, one is with the with the funding, the queues funding for for workers, for companies that are having thirty percent or more reduction in in their revenues and their business. Of course, we certainly fit that in aviation where we've been running anywhere between eighty and ninety percent down during COVID. So that's the other areas what you mentioned, Mayor. So that's, the other area is what you mentioned, Mayor, is on the, on the land or on the, the lease relief. And in a normal year, that would be a big thing, like having our, our lease rent reduced in a normal year would be, or, or eliminated in a normal year would be twenty million dollars. But it's all attached to your number, your, your revenue. So in our, in our case, although that would normally be twenty million, I think last year was in the order of like four or five million dollars. So still helpful. So I don't want to say it wasn't helpful, but, but not, when you're normally, our normal revenues are a quarter billion dollars. So in, in retrospect, it's just a, a couple of percent or a couple of percentage points. So, and then to your question about this year, on the, the good news side, this year we did receive the same incentive, I'll say, from the federal government, where for, for twenty twenty one, we will not be paying the, the lease rent. And again, it's, it's, it's helpful, but at the macro level, having, having more support for, for aviation, which is so critical for Canada, is, is certainly important for that, that support out of federal government would certainly be helpful. Especially since it looks like we're going to be a few more months away from rebounding. We know we're going to rebound, but it's, it's going to be with the, with the variance in the vaccines racing each other. It's going to be a little bit later, I think, till we see that recovery.
Thank you, Mr. Ruth. Mayor Shaggers, I recognize you have your hand up again. I'll just quickly go to any other member of council first if they have a question before I go back to yourself. Any other member of council that hasn't spoke yet? Okay, Mayor Shaggers.
Thank you. So one other question I do have, I did have an opportunity to go through part of the federal budget last night. I didn't look specifically to funding or support available to Canadian airports. I take it that there is nothing in there. Is that correct?
There, there was nothing, I, I'll say that was, was specific. There was a lot of language in there about providing support for trade corridors, gateways. So we're, we're not, I don't want to say we're, we're completely optimistic, but we're hoping that the, the, the information that we, we talked about earlier about the, the cargo area in particular, that we're trying to, trying to continue to, to grow out of here. To be a real asset, not only for Alberta and our region, but for Canada, that we have an opportunity to, to, to have some funding for that. But there wasn't anything specific in there on that. You might have seen last week, there was an announcement that, that the federal government has come to an arrangement with Air Canada on, on helping the largest carrier in Canada move forward with some equity participation and some, some cash infusion. So we're, we're not giving up. Again, there wasn't anything I can specifically point to, but there was some language in there in two or three different areas that we think is worth pursuing as, as more specifics come forward.
Thank you. Mr. Ruth, I do have one question. So your expansion cargo project, so the thirty-six million dollars that you currently have. What do you anticipate that that will return back to EIA in investment?
So it's, it's, I'm kind of glad you brought that up because, again, as, as all of you know, we're not-for-profit. And, and our people ask me in one sentence, what do I do? And I say, after safety and security, our role is to create economic prosperity for our region in a fiscally responsible way. So cargo is interesting because the investment in cargo is literally an investment in our region. Like we, we will not make money on that investment in terms of our, our airport because cargo does not park cars or pay, pay AIF fees or concession or other things. Cargo is purely, other than landing fees, cargo does not generate a lot of income for the airport, but is a huge generator in jobs. And it, it's a cascading benefit. So it, it's not just jobs in and around the airport. In many ways, cargo cascades out way further. You know, we talked about farming earlier and agriculture and, and the, the using cargo, these air pipelines to export agriculture products and bring in e-commerce is huge for our region. It creates so many jobs. We actually created about thirteen thousand direct and indirect jobs in the three years prior to COVID. And a lot of those were related to our, our growth and expansion and our logistics capabilities. So I, it, it won't generate a, a lot for us, but it is hugely important for our region and for where our overall vision is for, for the airport and its collaboration with the region.
Thank you very much. Ms. Swain, I'll look to yourself or any members of your team that may have a question from administration. And then we'll go back to council to see if they have any.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to thank Mr. Horner, Mr. Ruth and Ms. Hertz for their presentation today. Lots of great information. I myself don't have any questions, but I just wanted to look to, we have Mr. Fernandez on the line if he has any questions for the group.
Thank you, Ms. Swain, and thank you, Tom and Doug and Joan for presenting. No, well, well, maybe one quick question, Tom, if I may. On the cargo side, have you considered, or, or are there any considerations to increase the capacity or, or the attraction on cargo? I understand the dilemma with the, the, the situation of, you know, passenger terminals and parking terminals that need to be filled by passengers. So I guess the dilemma that you would not make direct economic benefit or returns out of increased cargo operation. But are there any considerations to double down on cargo like Anchorage or Louisville?
Well, in many ways, I, I think we have doubled down. I, one of the way, one of the ways, as I mentioned earlier about the northern trade corridor funding at a time when we, you know, our capital resources are currently tight right now is we're investing eighteen million dollars to match the, the federal, the money to expand our operations. Because we, we do think that we should double down on cargo. This e-commerce trend that, that is moving forward, more and more people are clearly through COVID are getting way more comfortable on, on getting shipments online. That's something that we want to capitalize on in our region. So within, within region of being, within reason of being financially prudent. We will, we and our board are, are very bullish on, on growing cargo because we see the, the benefit for our entire region.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again. Thanks. And looking one more time to any member of council, do you have any comments or questions? Counselor Kadasiak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wonder to Mr. Horner, he's our representative sitting on the board and I wondered if he had any comments. I appreciate his role and service that he's able to provide to the board. The chair and Ruth have given some examples of challenges that have been faced. And from Parkland County's perspective and your role on that board, Mr. Horner, I wondered if you had some comments that you'd like to offer. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Kadasiak. It's been an honor to be on the board. I've enjoyed the time that's been on there. It's been a challenging year, as you've heard. I think where I'm really excited is, A, the, the efforts that we've been making on Villeneuve and working with that, that fabulous asset that we have. Secondly, on the agricultural side of things, and I know Mayor Shaggers and I share this view that, and a number of your counselors, that agriculture and the value added that we can create in the county is going to be just critical to Alberta's success in the future. So having that, that cargo piece and the added value to that is going to be critical for Parkland County. And then when you think about the Acheson Industrial Area and the number of companies that are actively engaged on freight and moving freight through the airport. It really is quite, quite, quite good in terms of adding value to what we have in that, the fabulous area of Acheson County. I, or Acheson Industrial Park, you know, included in that is, is companies that are actively engaged around testing for COVID as well as some other newer technologies that are being worked on. So there's a lot going on there that we could take a lot more of council's time. And I know Tom is jumping at the bit to, to, to talk to you about that too, but there is a lot of exciting things happening. When we get out of this, and we will get out of this, I think you're going to see a real expansion of, of things that will be a benefit to the Parkland County.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horner. Mr. Ruth, did you want to do any last minute follow-up?
Just that we really appreciate the opportunity as always and we, we, we get, we have lots of communications in between these meetings, which we really appreciate. So thank you all for your leadership.
Okay, with that, thank you very much to all of you and I hope you guys have a blessed day. Looking, we do have a motion on the table with, from Counselor Kadasiak, looking to all members of council. Are you in favor of that motion? Please raise your hand. And that is carried. So with that, again, thank you very much. And Ms. Swain, we'll return back to our Project Unite update and we'll finish off with, with Mark. I think we left off there. If Mark had any closing comments after Mr. Versar's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will just pass it right back over to Mark.
Thank you, Mrs. Swain. No, I just want to say that, you know, things are going really well. We've really had great engagement from the staff and I think we're, you know, really starting to get some tools out there that are helping the staff work remote. And allowing them to get online a lot easier, which is, I think, a benefit for everybody. So with that, I'll just leave it if there's any questions from council.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll look to a member of committee if they would put the motion on the table and then we'll start with, with comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, Counselor Darrell Hollins, Division Four, I move that the Project Unite update be received for information as presented.
Mr. Hollins, do you have any comments on that or questions? No, okay. I do see two hands up. I do see two hands up. I'll start with Counselor Kadasiak, that's the first one I see, and then we'll go follow to Mayor Shaggers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the update. We've had a number of updates over the last year, year and a half or so. Talking about how we're moving our systems, moving away from manual processes and how this is affecting all areas of our, of our, certainly of our, of our organization. When we went into this, we started by saying we were going to look at eliminating processes that were time consuming and staff, you know, staff repetition. There was a lot of redundancy and we were going to be streamlining our process. One of the things that I'm looking for as we went into this process that I see coming out of it successfully as we're coming to, you know, these things operational is I, I'm thinking about configuring spaces within the organization. We have that trailer outside the front of the building where IT offices are and I'm wondering if, you know, less operational costs, if that's something that staff will be looking to in the future. And one of the things that always is significant for our budget, we looked at it again, just at spring adjustments here, our staff numbers. And I think we're at two seventy-one, I think that was the number, two seventy-five. I, I, I think the end goal was, that was areas that we could control as the municipality, because those are costs that are a huge component of our budget. And going into this process, those are things that we were looking at. So at some point in time, I'm just looking for, you know, to hear back from staff, some discussions about how we're going to capitalize on this investment. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, some million dollars in some of these areas in terms of IT and the studies, the consultants that have been engaged to try to streamline our organization and that was the end goal. So for efficiency and I, I see space, operational costs, I see staffing, areas that we would be able to position our municipality better and that we wouldn't have these scaling, these ongoing scaling costs. So I, I would hope that there would be some discussion at staff, at, at organizational level when you're, when you're reviewing processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swain, I see your hand. Did you want to comment on Counselor Kadasiak's question?
Yeah, for sure. And thanks for those comments, Counselor Kadasiak. Those are great comments relative to the presentation that we have in front of us today. Your first comment around, or one of your comments around space and the, and the trailer we have and all of that, that is something that we are reviewing right now is just office space and what our building looks like moving into continued remote work. And so we're talking about options for staff working remotely and what that looks like post-COVID and, and when there's actually the option to work remotely. So that will help us free up some space within the office and, and make sure that we're optimizing space. Because if a staff member is working remotely the majority of the time, there's not a need for them to have a dedicated space in the building. And there may be the opportunity to have some shared office space. And your question around staffing levels and contracting, and that's something we'll certainly bring back as part of Budget twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, moving into next year. And so we are going to be looking at our IT service levels and, and our IT contractor budgets. So we'll be doing that this year just to ensure that we are getting the best value for money and we are aligned. And did you, sorry, any other questions that you had as part of, of those questions or did I answer them?
Those, those are, those are the focus. It's a staffing space and numbers and just as an organization, we went into this to be streamlined and to gain some efficiencies. And we've had a huge, huge expenditure toward achieving that goal. My, my point is that's the goal and, and how are we going to have, you know, key outcomes and a measurement back on that investment toward what we were looking to achieve. I think you've answered it. Thank you.
Thanks. And I just want to ask Mr. Fitch if he has anything to add there.
No, I think the biggest thing for us is just looking at how we do things better, anything that can be automated. We definitely want to do that. There's no sense wasting our time, staff, our staff time on processes that a system can do. And that's really where we've been focusing, you know, to automate those, to loosen up time for staff to focus on where their expertise is. And that's really where our focus has been so far in the program.
Okay, Mayor Shaggers.
Thank you. In regards to the Safety Codes App and the City View Portal, I'm wondering when the client uploads any information, whether it's pictures or notification of work completion and advising or informing that they're looking for inspection, do our staff get a notification of that? And subsequently, is there a response provided to the client or customer when the anticipated inspection date might be so they can better coordinate with their contractors and get their work completed? Thanks.
Are you asking the question for the future or for where we are today?
No, and when this is completed and, and we have it rolled out, is that part of the development? Has, has the software been, I guess, designed and engineered? So there's that interactive component, so we can expedite the process. Because this is all about customer service, quicker turnaround, you know, builders, developers don't want to wait. Time is money. So once they notify through, because it does say, the presentation said there's an ability for individuals to upload, send pictures, so I'm assuming they can also inform, just send a, a notification, hey, the work is completed. I'm ready for inspection for the building code, electrical, whatever discipline it is. Staff then respond and say, great, we'll be out there in three business days. Is that something that was designed into the process?
Yes, it will definitely be something that's available. We're just at the very beginning. We're just signing the contract with the supplier that was just done. But we are going through all of that and the whole goal is to automate all of that and make it much more interactive. And, you know, set it up so that residents or developers do not even have to come into the building is our ultimate goal. But it does have all that functionality, the program. So we're very clear in our RFP on what we wanted. And we believe the City View was the best fit for what we were looking for. And it's all about using the software the way it was designed and that will result in some of our processes changing for the better.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fitch. I'll look to any other members of committee if they have any questions and then I'll go back to you, Mayor. Do you have a comment again? Any other members of this committee? Okay, Mayor Shaggers, you didn't have another comment?
No, I don't.
Okay. I have a comment. I just wanted to make a note that I that deficiencies are not always measured by the number of staff. Sometimes that, and I appreciate that, and I think to have that, maybe some update on that. I recognize that if staff aren't doing some of that, they're on to doing the bigger work at hand that council has set direction to. So, so I recognize, and I'm sure many members of council recognize it, it's not a clear delineation of just staff numbers. So, so with that, we do have a question on the table by, by Councilor Hollins. And I'll look to committees, is there any other comments or questions before we call the question? All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Thank you very much. We have a, that motion is passed and now Ms. Swain, if we can go to the Community League update. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Suzanne Merrill, Supervisor, Recreation and Culture, has joined us to present a Community League update and answer any questions that committee may have. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm just, I'm just trying to share my screen right now. My apologies.
The lovely world of technology, Ms. Merrill, doesn't it?
It really is. It's blocking me for some reason.
That's okay, Suzanne. We also have Lois and Barb on the line if there's any troubleshooting that's needed.
Looks like we're getting closer.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you, Barb. I'm so, good morning. I'm here today to provide you an update on the Parkland County Community League's COVID-19 in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic. We'll go to that first slide.
I don't have any screen sharing. Yeah, I don't have any screen sharing at this point on my end. Does any members of council see it?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, I'll just go through the presentation. I can just go through the presentation on my computer. Thanks. Go ahead.
Wonderful. So just to update on what our current status is, we do have 26 community leagues, 24 of which have actual physical halls. Within our halls, we have 50% of our halls that have caught up on or are completed their 2021 AGMs. So for those of you that might not be aware, the societies acted, provide a brief break on the need for AGMs. That grace period for AGMs did end back in the fall of 2020. So we've been working with the community leagues to get all caught up in their AGMs. Some are completing their, during this time, some have also been working on some renovations, updates to their facilities. Some halls are continuing to be allowed programming, depending on what their previous programming looked like. Some are also doing some new programming options such as markets that can occur during our current restrictions. We also have one community league that is experiencing financial hardships that is requiring immediate support that we are able to provide them through our, through their current sustainability grant. So that's kind of a summary of what our halls are currently doing. As of April 6, we did move our restrictions, our COVID restrictions did move all our halls back to step one, which meant a lot of them had to stop any plans that they had for trying to do some sort of reopening this spring. So back in, under stage ones, they're allowed to do wedding ceremonies up to 10 people, funeral services up to 20 people, and some youth and sports dance activities such as 4-H and Girl Guys are still allowed to continue, as well as markets are still allowed to continue. Go to the next slide, please. So over the past 12 months, our community development department has provided ongoing support to the community leagues in a variety of ways. One of those is we maintain ongoing communication with our community league presidents at every step of the way since the restrictions were put in place to help our community leagues understand the restrictions, to help them answer any questions from the provincial government in terms of their intent of restrictions and getting any clarification needing, needed. We've done this through emails to our presidents. We've done some sharing on Facebook, on the Facebook group for all of our community board members, as well as inviting our community leagues to any town halls that were being hosted by ARPA in terms of recreation and community associations. We supplied all of our community leagues that have playgrounds with COVID guideline signs for installation at their playground locations to help educate the community about being safe on the playgrounds and allowing those playgrounds to stay open. And we use the undersubscribed grants from 2020 to provide some funding and some support through COVID. So one of those was a one-time grant to help offset the utility charges for the halls in 2020, understanding that their revenue streams were drastically affected by COVID. And then we also provided a one-time grant to purchase any COVID cleaning supplies and PPEs for their volunteers that they might need in order to help with the reopening. We did have about 12 to 14 of our community leagues take, utilize that grant to purchase cleaning supplies, as well as we had quite a few that purchased through us the backpack sprayers in order to be able to open and do disinfecting once they were able to open, so setting themselves up for success once they are allowed to open. We do have some community leagues that have applied for or successful with receiving funding through provincial COVID grants and that's that small and minor, or small and medium business enhancement grant. Some, some were successful in getting some funding. And we will move on to the next slide, please. So over the next 12 months, we are planning to, some continued support in terms of helping our community leagues relaunch and reopen as restrictions allow. We continue to provide updates to presidents as guidelines change. We continue to support communities and the creative program ideas that align with their current guidelines. A lot of our community leagues are looking at alternative ways to bring in revenue. We've got some looking at markets, some looking that previously have done catering, looking if they can join into the frozen meal options for catering or doing a drive-in movie and dinner options. So lots of creative ideas being done based on our current guidelines. We continue to encourage our boards to create long-range plans and ways to diversify their income. This last year has really shown our boards that they rely heavily on rental incomes and that as we move into the next few years, that we really need to look at long-range planning and ensuring that any of those reserves that they've tapped into, that they have a plan to start building those reserves back up so that they can continue their great work that they do. Continue to offer community development learning opportunities virtually. So the Communities Development Group for the Tri-Missouri region continues to host online training opportunities for our boards. They've pivoted the topics to really tie into COVID-related topics at this time. So budgeting during a pandemic, hosting virtual AGMs during a pandemic, long-range planning, ideas to get themselves out of the difficulties they might be having right now as a board. So are all topics that are being covered through those. And then we're supporting the halls that are facing financial hardship through access to grant monies and organizational support to get them back on their feet and get a path forward for, for improving their financial situation. And we'll move on to the next slide, please. So some challenges that the community leagues have been facing over this past, over a year now, is they are entering into that second wedding season and they are all forecasting that it's most likely not going to happen. Or if it's going to happen, it's not to the degree that it's happened in past years. And so they do recognize that they're going to lose that income from that second wedding season. We have a depletion of the community cash reserves. Any large cash reserves that our halls did have, they have been tapping into to stay afloat this past year and those are starting to diminish, which will impact their ability to maintain their facilities long-term. A lot of them had those cash reserves there, building for larger projects for their facilities. And so we're going to see a need for support, a greater need for support from our sustainability grant in the near future, we believe. And there's also a reduction in availability of grants in general. A lot of grants pivoted to being COVID-specific grants, which has forced them to not be eligible at this time. We also saw recently that changes to the CFAP grant will greatly affect our halls' abilities to access that funding for the next while here. We also have seen a great loss in that traditional fundraising opportunities, casino revenues with casinos not running. Anyone who, who has missed a casino, so basically we've gone from a three-year waiting period for casino that every month casinos aren't running. We're adding another month to that waiting period. So it's going to be some time before halls are able to access casinos again if they were just about up for one. Jamborees haven't been running, bingos haven't been running, and so their traditional fundraising opportunities have been greatly affected. We're also seeing volunteer and board burnout. It's a very stressful year to try to manage the constant change in guidelines and how that affects your boards and making the best decisions for your community association. And so we are seeing that volunteers are struggling to, to work through that. They're kind of done. It's now time to throw the hat in for some. And so we're, and trying to encourage those new volunteers to come in during this time when you can't meet in person and have those community events to encourage new, new individuals to join the community league is, it is challenging. And then they're also seeing, and we're seeing, is that community isolation, that lack of events, lack of, of community gathering is starting to, to, to affect those communities and our rural communities. And our community leagues are really looking for ways to do that virtually and we're trying to support them in, in being able to achieve some of those activities. So that is where our community leagues are currently at and the supports that we've provided them over the last year. And we will continue to support them as we navigate the constant changing world of COVID-19 and hopefully able to see more activity happening in the community leagues as the year progresses.
Thank you very much, Suzanne, for your presentation. At this point, I will go to a committee member if they could please put the motion on the table, please.
Madam Chair, it's Councilor John McNabb, Division five. I'll bring forward that the Community League update be received for information and as presented.
Councilor McNabb, do you have any comments or questions as a result of the presentation? We'll start with you.
I have no comments, sorry, questions, but I'd like to thank Suzanne and all of her team for, and I would call it holding hands of our community leagues. And thanks very much for that and being part of the, the community out here. I recognize all the work that you guys have done to help our small communities go through this, this, some changes. And, and it is recognized how much you have held our, held our hands of our communities and directed them to be positive and direct them to be successful. Thanks very much for all your hard work.
Thank you very much. Councilor Kabasiak, I see you raised your hand. We'll go to you next.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate, appreciate the help that's been given to support our community groups, for sure. Thank you to your team. A couple of questions. You indicated that there has been a one-time grant for some utility charges for one of our community leagues. I know we used to have Hall Operational Assistance Grants that helped with partial payment of utilities and phones. Do we still offer a hall utility, a hall operational grant? One question. Another question I have is with regard to CFAP grants. Now, partial, partial component of CFAP grant is applying to the government for funding, but being able to match that with the community league's funds and/or volunteer. So normally, we rely a lot on the volunteer component to match up with those grants. And I'm just wondering if there are some situations where possibly community leagues might need some assistance in the county to, to match up so that they could continue because the volunteer burnout is there. What, loss of cash is one thing, but volunteer burnout's another thing. And so we might have to step up there. And the third question I, it's around, you know, I certainly wish all the communities well. I'm former president of community league myself, so I understand the operational costs and the volunteers and programming, that type of thing. One moment for security from the municipality with halls was that we asked for dissolution agreements to be signed so that if in fact halls were in an unfortunate position, that they failed, that, you know, the federal or provincial money, that municipal money that was given to the organizations would fall back into the community. Winter burn was an example. They folded and their funds went back. So I'm just wondering if you can just give me an update because I did ask, I think there were one or two that didn't sign a dissolution agreement. If you could just let me know if that's been corrected so that they all have signed a dissolution agreement. Thank you.
Ms. McNabb or anybody from the team?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to Mrs. Kabasiak through Madam Chair. So just to answer your questions, I'll start with the dissolution agreements. There is no official separate dissolution agreement. We, in our update to our grant program, we are including that as an amendment to our grant program that anytime Parkland County grants monies are distributed, that there is a dissolution clause in there. It is in there, but not as clearly as, as what you have articulated. Our most recent hall that did dissolve would be Jack Pine and they did, any of their existing money that, that was left after the sale of the property was divided between the community leagues in the West. So they, they did follow through with that. But we have recognized that it is one of the shortfalls in our major sustainability grant and that is being rectified with our, when we do an update to that policy. In terms of this CFAP, the, the concern and issues that we are seeing with CFAP is actually that the provincial government has changed how, what is qualifying for CFAP during COVID. And that's where we're having that issue with our community leagues being able to access that fund. The major sustainability grant is the vehicle in which Parkland County can support them with funding dollars to, to provide that matching dollars for CFAP. So if a community league is looking to apply for CFAP, they come to Parkland County through the major sustainability grant program first and then they can use our money as their matching dollars for CFAP. So that vehicle is there for them to use if they have a project that qualifies under the current CFAP guidelines. And then in terms of the operating grant, utility grant, so the, what we provided for COVID was a one-time specific utility grant. It was in addition to the operating grant. So because the program and events grants weren't being accessed due to all the halls being closed and the halls not able, we reallocated that money into, into being able to provide an additional grant towards their utilities for 2020. So it was in addition to their operating grant is still happening on an annual basis.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill, for your answers to Councilor Kabasiak's question. I recognize Mayor Shaggin, you have your hand up if you'd like to go forward, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Ms. Merrill. One of the things, it's not just changes to the criteria of the CFAP. The provincial government cut back around $37 million that are available to community organizations. So it's, it's a cut in funding as well. And you had mentioned there might be situations where the county will have to provide more funding than we traditionally have. The question I have is, do we know, do we, do we maintain and track the amount of money that our community leagues have accessed through the provincial government's CFAP program historically? So we can identify what, how much money they've relied on that, on the provincial government. And certainly I do recognize that some of these are for enhancing their existing facilities or, or new capital projects. But if there's a, a community hall, for instance, that has major structural damage and the integrity is threatened if work isn't undertaken, the county might have to step up and provide additional funding. So the question just is, are we tracking and maintaining a record of the CFAP grants that our community halls have received on an annual basis? Thanks.
Ms. Merrill, there are one member of your team if you wanted to comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, through you to Mayor Shaggin. In terms of the tracking of money, we don't explicitly track CFAP money because not all community leagues do work through us to access. because not all community leagues do work through us to access that funding. So the ones that we know of, we have record of how much they've been successful in receiving, if they let us know. But not every community tells us all the time when they've applied or been successful in it. We can definitely pose the question of our community leagues and try to, to get a better understanding of what that number looks like. Um, but we do have a rough idea, just not a, a complete picture.
Thanks, Ms. Merrill. I'll look to other members of the, uh, co- uh, committee of the whole, if they have any comments or questions. Seeing none, I'll, uh, I, I will pose a, a comment and a question. So, um, first of all, I think we need, um, to express from council perspective to all of our volunteers at, uh, all of our community halls, that we do appreciate all the work that they've done. And we know that it is really, really difficult for them at this point. Ms. Merrill, you had talked about strategic planning, um, and the the need for a lot of our community halls to probably undertake that at a different level. Is there any, um, programming that you're doing, um, from your end to assist some of them? Some of them, because of the volunteer burnout, they may not have that capability on their board. Um, is there anything that's being developed to work with them or assist them, point them in the, in the direction to get some of that assistance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to answer your questions in terms of strategic planning, the province used to provide that support on a board by board. We did have many of our boards that access that where the province would work through a strategic planning process and actually complete that strategic plan with them. The province in the last two years has cut that program and no longer provides that service. So we have, it has been identified as an area that is now in need for our community leagues. Our community development workshops, we have had so much strategic planning. However, they are at that high level, this is how you do it, not actually that step-by-step walking through. So we are looking at opportunities that we might be able to fill that gap. We have one that will be working with one of the community halls coming up, um, as part of those tri municipal workshops. Each municipality gets a one-on-one session for one of our community leagues. So we've tagged our one community that's having issues financially as they will be the recipient this year to work one-on-one with that strategic planner, to develop that strategic plan. And we'll see how that process goes and if we can financially support that process to allow more of our community leagues to access that program.
That, that's, that's great news. Um, I just, you know, we've had, we've heard a lot of the, the doom and gloom around COVID and the community halls and, and I just, uh, wanted to make a plug out, I guess, for, um, some of the community halls that I see out in my area. So I think it's not all doom and gloom. There's definitely some of those that are taking this opportunity to do the renovations that they need. I know Moonlight is doing that. They've been doing a pile of renovations in the last little while to make their hall more attractive. And then also Magnolia, looking at how they're going to expand and, and taking this opportunity as well as, they're not sitting back, that's for sure. And, and I do know that I did send out an email and I know that our staff is going to be, uh, working. Ms. Merrill, though, um, I did want to extend publicly to yourself, um, the appreciation that I heard from Magnolia, um, with your help. They, they sang your praise. Um, so thank you very much for that. Um, they are definitely a small community hall, but they're very mighty in their volunteer base, so. So, uh, but they do appreciate your, um, involvement with their community association. So we do have a motion on the table, um, by Councilor McNabb. If there's no further comments, I'll ask the question. All those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. So with that, again, thank you, uh, to everyone that participated today and in our committee of the whole meeting and the meeting is now closed.